All right, thank you all for being here. We will call this July the 7th, 2020, and raise hand to order. A couple of things before we really get started. I would like to introduce our county attorney, Mr. Russell Britt. He has hit the ground running, and it's been a busy couple of days for him. We're glad to have you. And I also wanted to mention John Taylor. Some of you may have... We really need to pray for John. John has been hospitalized now for about 10 days, and has been diagnosed with COVID. And we just need to remember, John and Bit also, Bit also had a stroke, and is in rehab in June. So, we really need to remember them in our prayers. Refer to the agenda. There is one agenda item that was inadvertently omitted that has been added, and that is Dean Kim on Washington Road Tower site. So, that will be 5A under new business. So, Commissioner Andrews will now lead us in our invitation.
First, dear Lord, we thank you for all your many blessings. We thank you, Lord, for your mercy and your grace to us. We pray, Lord, tonight, that you would give us wisdom to make good decisions for the county, Lord, and everything that we do is in your favor. We pray for those who are sick, our friends and neighbors, Lord, who have been affected by this virus. We pray, Lord, that you would take care of them. We pray for the families of those deceased by the virus in our community, Lord. We pray for those first responders in our healthcare and our sheriff's department, Lord, and our emergency management, that you would take care of them, put a hedge around them, Lord, and take great protection of them as they protect us. We thank you for all of your blessings. In Jesus' name we pray.
One other question from Commissioner Lane has called in. We have a year over on the phone in town. Here, I hope I'm what we're saying, that he is present. Joining in...
Thank you. It's not far, so good.
Okay, great. Joining in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to this republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight is the minutes for regular session on June 16th, 2020. Do I have a motion? Okay?
I'll say it.
All right, there is a motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? So, all those who are in favor? All right, and you're in favor. Thank you. So, the motion is approved. Is there a petition to citizens?
No.
No, all the business. As I mentioned, there is one item 5A under new business. But before that, we have the financial statements of March and April 2020. Is there a motion?
Some move to approve the financial statement.
Okay, there's a motion to approve both financial statements. Is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Okay.
No, no, it looks good.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion or any questions? Now, questions about this?
I got one. Have you seen any kind of downtrends or anything, or too early to tell on what's going with the way this country or the county or where it's going to be going?
Well, that's a good question. You would think you would see that, but we've actually seen the opposite here. Our SPOS numbers are a little up, our loss numbers are a little up, comparatively speaking, to what we've seen the past several months and the past comparative years. So, our revenue numbers look good. Now, we do have a little more spending on safety supplies, things like that, some internal safety features that have done here at the courthouse and some other places. Ag center, we add a small, basically a hotel room for someone if they're quarantined or anything. But other than that, they were a little bit... I was of the same impression that you guys would probably be, that we'd probably see a downturn, or we really haven't seen the opposite here.
Of course, with the state budget, that's a long, maybe a couple months before, several months before the county's decision. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is a reappointment to the Regional Seven EMS Council. Tom Faulkner is the Assistant EMS Director of Preparators on Regional Seven EMS Council for Harris County. His term expires June 30th, 2020, and it has been requested by the Regional Seven EMS Council that an appointment or reappearance be made for the term to expire June 30th, 2022. Mr. Faulkner desires to be reappointed to this council. Is there a motion?
I made a motion.
Okay.
I'll say it.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor of the motion to reappoint Mr. Faulkner? All right.
Aye.
Okay, motion is approved. The next item on our agenda is the Alcohol Advocate Privacy Notification Policy. During the alcohol application on it by GCIC several months ago, the county was advised that a privacy notification policy needed to be in place. The policy provides that alcohol licensed applicants will receive notification of privacy rights and a privacy act statement prior to being penalized. I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay.
And there is a second. Is there a discussion? Any discussion?
Who is the second?
So, it's a motion?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor to approve the policy?
Aye.
All right, motion is approved. And then the addition of the agenda item, and that is Dean Kim referencing Washington Road Tower site. Dean, if you'd like to come forward and share with us what you want.
Good afternoon. I appreciate you guys taking the opportunity to see us this afternoon. I am Dean Kim. I'm representing, as well as Michael Wright, Washington Road Towers LLC, as well as I'll be representing West Monacre Towers LLC. Back in June last year, we came for you as a commission. I have an opportunity to build two tower sites in the county. From a justification aspect, both sites are fully justified for public safety, the radio system condition for coverage, as well as cellular and obviously broadband. It's very much underserved, especially in Washington Road Site, Pione Mountain Valley area and so forth. So, that's basically where we're coming to, Commissioner, as part of the ability to build sites at our cost, but allowing the county to participate. And participation would be local permitting, especially if you see anything to do with the permitting aspect of that site. The LLCs will own the title, build it, as I said, at no cost to the county. They turn for the partnership or the usage agreement with the county. Participation for the permitting aspect, the county has used the tower at no cost. If in future day down the road they decide they want to go on the site, they'll just pay the expense for what they're putting, there'll be no lease on the tower site. So, zero out your cost for operation. I think we put $10 figure on it to be legal. We work with John Taylor. That being basically, he tasked me with a few items that need to be addressed. One, formal an LLC for each of the MNT locations. We don't have to craft a ground lease agreement that encompass multi-year, which we've done, since the 9th of that year. And I've supplied you guys with copies of each of these agreements. So, this was crafted over several months. Unfortunately, we've done, had some health issues and so forth, so we had to drug out when we get hit with COVID. So, basically, we're back before you. Only difference at this point is, due to the timing and the delays, the West Monacre site has been canceled. That opportunity is no longer on the table. Several factors, but bottom line is that at this time, it's not on the table. So, we're addressing the Washington Road site at this time. So, having said that, we're basically before you guys, Dean, get an answer. If y'all want to participate, you just need to know within 30 days, once we're integrating, if you want to participate, and we'll take care of the permitting aspect of it, we'll start with the due diligence. There's several thousand dollars worth of engineering aspects that has to be done. We just need to know we're clearing what was open, we're ready for it. And when we start it, we'll supply documentation to building inspections. As the due diligence is done, you'll have to complete package if you don't, we would. Basically, just need to know, as I said, whether the county wants to participate. So, if they don't, at that time, just let us know. We're funded, invested, ready to move on the project. We'd like to start with it. So, we know that we can work together on this.
Okay. So, is there any further questions on the Washington Road Site in relation to the old power? Where is this site?
Where the current power tower is, you'll notice the power line comes over north, south of the bridge. We're to the west of the power lines, basically, 10 yards or so. So, it's pretty much on the same ridge, exactly. Mr. Wright is a landowner that owns that property. Valley Case right there. His son's in high school as a junior. He can't get into that house. Can't get cell service. Has to drive down to the library or go to San job.
Yeah, you lose it all, down and down. Will this tower assist in the up and down terrain there on Johnson Road?
It's on top of the ridge. It looks into the landfill area of Johnson Road, looks back into Pione Mountain Valley. So, it basically is an ideal scenario to get coverage on both sides of that ridge, which is currently underserved. And you drive through there now, you're basically hit or miss. It's whether you've got any access, whether it be Verizon's ATZ. We're building the site to fully support any carrier that were to come in, at least three carriers, broadband. Our purpose is to try to enhance the wireless as quickly as we can in the county. We need more sites. And I think the COVID issue, I think we're going to see some funding come down in private federally and by state line to help in these last mile areas such as Harris County where it's not very populated. We've got a little good population, but it's not a big number that your charter's going to get to some of the others. So, we've got to have a facility ready, best and available to these carriers so that we can attract them and try to get them in there. So, our idea is obviously get the carriers in as quick as we can.
Do you have any idea right now, our average lease agreement with you, the cost that we pay per day?
Currently, you're paying around $500 to $600 a month on the rates, which normally if you went to a big carrier, you'd be paying $1,000 a month per site, per site.
That's correct. One side is $1,000.
Absolutely. So, the cost savings is there. The other thing I'll stress right here, the county's got a valley need to get connections back to length. We've discussed it with IT guys. They don't have a line of sight from any of your service areas that you currently have building wise. That site is absolutely will fulfill that need. They can actually do a microwave point-to-point, come from the county, now one center or one of the water tanks, be able to get services you're already paying for via your internet connection to those so that you can run IP phones, you can run the internet. There again, they'll cut your cost of which you may be paying for ATZ charge or what have you. So, we've run the numbers. We've obviously, there's several other opportunities, but that's one that you can address immediately with the cost savings. You're probably paying several hundred dollars a month per device or per line that you got out there, which could be accommodated with the wireless.
And I want to make it correct, if I'm wrong, if we choose to participate as in voice agreement, the county quote unquote pull comments. Is that right?
Well, we have a lengthy process of community development. I had to approve this. I would defer to the Brian Williams, the Community Service, Community Development Director, to ascertain if this follows the established county rules. I don't know.
Yeah, and I don't know either. And I really would like, Mr. Britt, to make any decision. But hopefully...
And we have no problem with that. Obviously, you're fresh in the scene there, and you 're a district with the county and so forth. We'd like to have the opportunity to work with it. And like I said, you know, the county's opportunity is, again, very little opinion costs passing into it, obviously the permitting aspect. But like I said, that's their participation that we're counting on. The process of bringing it, we discussed it. Basically, we're giving him exactly what he needs. The only difference is, we're basically, if a company came in to do a tower site now, you want that complete package turned in, 15 copies or whatever it may be, before you can ever find out if you're going to clear it zone. All we're asking for here is, we know we're clearing zone, that aspect's been done, you gain the opportunity to be on the site at zero interest or zero cost monthly. You take care of the permitting aspect. We take care of all costs associated with building it, maintaining it. And like I said, your only cost would be is if you ever go to that with any of your devices, you'll be responsible for your power utilities, as you are with any other site, any cost for your equipment, but no rear current cost, which in essence, several thousand dollars a month in sales over the years, it adds up. So, there again, we're just, as a entrepreneur, we're trying to work with the county, when we're where we can, share resources, and this is what I think we brought it for. So, we basically just need to get an answer where the county's on board. And should you need any other information, I'll try to, I ain't no address. They got contracts and stuff, but we won't have to assist.
Okay.
Other than this tower, I know you said the West Monacre is off the table right now. Do you think it may come back on the table, or you may have other sites to...
The landowner has decided, in landowners, the partner has the opportunity. When COVID hit, he's come back and said at this time, it doesn't make this a sense for him. To say the possibility it could come back, absolutely. I won't rule it out, but as of today, it's off the table. Should we build that site? Absolutely. We'll be right back in front of you. He just, as of today, he's decided.
Because I didn't, I'm not, you know, that's good, Dave. You're right. We need desperate help out there.
There again, whatever you need from us, let us know.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Mr. Bailey?
About Chairman of the Commissioners, item number six, proposal for engineering services for Phase Four of the Manal War Railroad Recreation Trail. Phases one, two, and three of the Manal War Railroad Recreation Trail.
What?
And that is the name of it.
The name just flows. The name just flows off your tongue. I like it so much.
I'd be correct in my pronunciation. Phases one, two, and three of the Manal War Railroad Recreation Trail has been completed and are now in use. That trail's been heavily used all three phases every day, a lot of folks. So, we have the opportunity to continue that trail with Phase Four. And this year's budget, that started seven days ago, the FY 2021 approved T-Splus budget in particular, contains $100,000 for engineering and 1.1 lane for construction of Phase Four of the trail to continue the trail for another 1.5 miles from where it ends to the Callaway Country Store. And this process includes the rehabilitation of the railroad bridge over US 27, meaning redact it, strip off the asbestos, lead-based paint, and repaint it. Carter Sloot, the county's consulting engineer for all previous phases of this project, has prepared and submitted a proposal for engineering services for Phase Four. This proposal costs $98,500 and includes design, survey, permitting, bidding assistance, contract administration, and construction supervision of all components of Phase Four. And this proposal is $1,500 below the budgeted amount. State recommends the board approve this proposal from Carter Sloot and authorize the chairman to execute the proposed agreement. If approved, this project can begin immediately with surveying and permitting and weather permitting. It is scheduled to be completed through the spring of 2021. And this is continuing a really popular trail, 1.5 miles using T-Splus money, which there are sufficient funds currently.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve this to go on with the Manal War Railroad Recreation Trail.
A second?
I'll say it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Are we going to be able to put a kiosk up there? So, that we, you know, right now we have a kiosk at the beginning, we have a kiosk at the corner store. We can put one there so we know we're going to have a destination to destination to destination. And my other question is, is there going to be a way that you can get from Country Store down to the trail? I know that the Country Store has eliminated some of their trees and bushes to see the trail. I just want to make sure we're going to be able to have a way to get there so we can market this, you know, and the handicap access.
Yes. Handicap accessibility is key. So, basically, our engineers are going to engineer asphalt switchbacks on Callaway property, but we have to go get Callaway easements, which has not been done yet. So, it's a lot of partnerships, a lot of folks, which if the board approves this, we can begin that process. So, it is a series of asphalt going a little bit past the Country Store to the south toward Hamilton, and at an appropriate spot, various asphalt switchbacks to the Callaway parking lot. And then from that point, because that's supposed to get expensive, and it needs handicap accessibility. We've thought about steps, that's not handicap accessible, be very inexpensive, but it isn't. It won't fill the bill. We also talked about maybe an elevated wooden platform, very expensive. It needs handicap accessibility. So, we thought about the most inexpensive idea would be to asphalt switchbacks on Callaway property to connect the parking lot, who in turn, citizens can then cross Highway 27 and jump on the Pine Mountain Trail.
Or if they'd like, they could bike all the way from Pine Mountain to the Country Store.
Then they could bike from downtown Pine Mountain to the Country Store and back. That would be a 10-mile round trip. And that is something to market. And that's something a lot of folks would come down here and do that trail for 10 miles.
Right.
So, we think it's a good logical project with, you know, any points and connectivity.
Was that your question, too?
My question was how are we going to access the Country Store from the trail? So, here is the answer.
Okay, any other questions? All right, there's a motion and a second. I'm waiting to approve the proposal for engineering services for Phase Four of the Manal War Railroad Recreation Train. So, all those in favor? Okay, here is...
What'd you say, Harry?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. The motion is approved. Okay, Mr. Bailey?
The next item is number seven, Jifa offer of loan modifications. The county has three loans from Jifa, which is the Georgia Environmental Facilities Authority. That is a state agency that grants loans and grants to the cities and counties for water and wastewater and other type environmental projects. The county has three loans with Jifa, the Water Meter Replacement Project, which is currently under construction, the filter plant expansion, which has been completed, and the Callaway Conservation Easement, which is ongoing and paid by the Callaway Foundation. Jifa has submitted to the county unsolicited an optional loan modification agreement in order to defer principal and interest payments for all three of these loans for six months, July through December of 2020, and then tack those payments on to the end of the loan period. This is not a little forgiveness, it's a loan deferment. The monthly payments are included in the approved budget, and the Water Works Department has sufficient funds to pay for these two loans without any deferment. The other loan is paid by Callaway through automatic monthly payments to the county, and then the county pays the loan. The Water Meter Replacement Project loan payback begins once the project is completed in late 2020. So, that payback has not begun yet, but it will begin in about September. The filter plant loan payback is $12,009.8 per month for a total deferment of $72,054.48 from July to December. The Callaway Conservation Easement Loan paid by Callaway is almost $12,000 per month for a total deferment of almost $72,000 from July to December. I spoke with the general manager of Callaway, and he has expressed interest. He would like for the county to defer at least that one for the six-month period. So, if the board wants to defer any of these three loans for six months, we get a motion and vote to approve and authorize the chairman to execute the agreements, which are attached. Again, these are optional. The county can do all three of them, or just one, or two. Again, there is sufficient funds in the budget for Water Works to pay these off, but we can simply defer them if the board so wishes. And in the back page, as you can see, the actual amortization schedule for these three loans.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we defer the Callaway Conservation Easement Loan, but that we do not defer the Water Meter Replacement Filter Plan, since we have sufficient funds to pay them now. We don't know what our funds will be like 18 months from now.
And I'll say that. Is there any other discussion or any other question? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
The next is number eight, project updates. This is a new program of work that began the new fiscal year that started seven days ago. In the budget, the major projects, we have about 46 major projects. Let me hit some of the highlights. Number four, a replacement telephone system for the courthouse, old library, community development building, and other locations. The bid response deadline was July 2nd. We had 18 responses. So, we are going through those responses, and they're being evaluated, and hopefully we can bring that to the board on September 1st commission meeting for consideration. And that is to replace the existing telephone system. Number six, purchase new equipment for the commission meeting room to allow live streaming recording of meetings. That is on bid. The bid opening is July 21st and board consideration on August the 4th. Again, that would be for this room only, to have various cameras installed and operated by a technician, the IT director, to livestream commission meetings on various platforms, YouTube and the county's website, live, and it will be recorded, and it can be archived.
And that would be to do it for every meeting, not just the emergency meetings.
It's every meeting.
From now on.
From now on. Commission meetings, planning meetings, any meeting that occurs in this room.
Is the cost of $20,000, is that on my highest end?
We had a pre-bid meeting today. About five companies showed up, and we told them $20,000 is a budget amount. I said, can I get a two or three camera system, microphones, a little control booth? They said $20,000 would be no problem for a very simple professional system. I don't, I think it would be on the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we're really excited about that. That was number six. Number nine, two replacement ambulances. Those items are on bid. The bid deadline is July 23rd and board consideration on August the 4th. And those are very long lead items. If we orb in August, they might be here at Christmas. Number 11, replace the energy recovery unit at the courthouse. That is also on bid. Bid opening is July 28th and board consideration on August 4th. And that is replace a 25-year-old AC unit on top of the courthouse. Number 15, dispose of the old 10,000 gallon underground fuel storage tank at Public Stores. That's on bid. Bid opening is July 28th and board consideration on August the 18th. And we're not using this old underground fuel tank anymore because we have gone to the wax card system, and that would be gasoline storage. We need more, but we still need our diesel tank. And again, that is a very old underground storage tank, about 20 to 25 years old. It doesn't get any better with age. It doesn't get any better with age. Number 23, Melody Lakes Dam Construction Project. We have received state approval on June the 30th to begin work on, so the construction plans have been approved by EPD. So now, our consultant, Carter Sloop, is preparing bid specs. We hopefully get those bid specs out in the next two weeks. And then hopefully, construction can begin and completion in early 2021. That is a long-term project, hopefully coming to an end. We need three easements. The three folks that have the easements are willing to give it to us. And the easements are on their hands, and we're waiting for them to be returned. But I don't see a problem with the end of easements. Temporary construction easements. Number 28, rest of trails. The board has approved the engineering proposal to not speed it for Phase Four, so that will officially begin to doubt. And both of that can be completely done by spring of 2021. Number 33, purchase three replacement garbage trucks. These garbage trucks are on bid. Bid opening is July 23rd for board consideration on August the 4th. One has already been ordered for the previous year. We're simply waiting for one of them to come in in September or October. So we're on bid for two of them. And those are replacements. Number 45, the employing conversation study using pro-vested senior government. We are working on that project diligently. We're working on it basically every day. It's ongoing, and hopefully, we can have that project completely to the board in mid to late July. If you look, as previously discussed on the CFO, the SLOSS and loss collection charts. If you look at May's collection number for June's, it was June's check for May's activity, It was up from last year and up from last month. There's the numbers. Can't explain it to you. And also, we're at 106% of collections, and we have one more month to go. So the SLOSS collections are coming in really robustly and over budget. And revenue over budget is a good thing. The loss is the same thing. June's check for May's activity was $188,784.39. Again, above last month and more than last year this time. SLOSS, can't say the same thing for SLOSS. We got $83,525, which is a little bit less than last month, and just a little bit less than last year. But again.
T-SLOSS?
That's T-SLOSS. It's T-SLOSS. So we're at 93%, and we have two months more of collections. So of course, that would go over the 100% collection as well as SLOSS and SLOSS. In the single family home building permits, for the month of June was 29. For the total of the year, 236, which beats the previous year of 232 single family home issues. So the trajectory for single family home building permits is at an increase. Hopefully, we can keep that trend going. The disposal of tonnage, we have one month left. We will exceed 17,000 tons, which you can see from the previous years. It's been 13,000 tons, then it creeped up to 14, 15, now it's up from 16,000 to 17,000 tons probably for this fiscal year. Lot of solid waste being collected out there and disposed out of the transfer stations. That's the report, the first report of the fiscal year. Be more happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, anyone have any question?
On number 30, we voted to do the wooden poles and new soccer lot.
Yes.
It says waiting for bid spec. Is that just where we need to get the new diagram of where they're going to go?
Correct.
Okay, I'll check on that.
Okay. And once we get those bid specs, show a diagram of where these are located, then we can prepare a bid spec tour, then get it out on bid.
There was at one time, the question of whether we would need an agreement with the Southwood Substation. Their permission, so we probably just need to revisit that. And how we're going to do that. Since it's a company of private nature. Okay, Mr. Britt?
Thank you, Chairman. Item number nine for the board's consideration is an agreement with the West Central Health District for hepatitis B services. Apparently, for over 20 years, the county has provided hepatitis B vaccine to the volunteer fire department personnel and various county employees. Up until now, the county has not had an agreement for the provision of the vaccine, but the health department is now requiring it. The volunteer fire department personnel and county employees would be required to submit a request form to the county clerk, which would approve it for the health department to then administer. The cost for the series of three shots is $56 per person. And then there's a cost for the tire, $5 per person. And the county would be invoiced for that. If the employees already have the vaccine, there's no need for another unless they need the tire to confirm that they have the maximum strength of the vaccine. And this will cover EMS, facilities maintenance, jail, prison, public works, solid ways, vehicle maintenance, and fire works. The agreements effective from July 1st, 2020, and expire June 30th, 2021. I have reviewed the contract. It's pre-vanilla. It does have an out clause, and that either side can terminate the contract upon 30 days written notice. This item does require a motion and a vote.
Okay, thank you. I would like the motion that we approved this contract. Is there a second?
No, second, bud.
Okay, there's a motion, second. Any discussion or any questions? No discussion, no questions. So all of those who are in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
All right. Item number 10 for the board's consideration is an agreement renewal with the city of Hamilton for vehicle maintenance services. This just simply renews the same intergovernmental agreement the county's had in place with the city for providing the maintenance of service vehicles. There are no changes to the applicable rates. And the agreement will begin upon signature and expire June 30th, 2021. This provides that if you terminate it, you're not written notice within 90 days. Again, this is the same agreement, it's just asking for renewal, and this requires a motion and a vote.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I move that we continue our intergovernmental agreement with Hamilton.
Okay, and I'll second that. Is there any discussion or any question? Okay, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Yes. Item number 11 is the exact same as number 10, except for it involves the vehicle maintenance services intergovernmental agreement with the city of Charlotte. And just like the item number 10, there are no changes to the applicable rates. And the agreement will be effective upon signature and will expire June 30th, 2021. It has the same termination provisions as the other intergovernmental agreement. And again, a motion and a vote is needed to allow the chairman to execute that agreement.
I believe that we also continue our intergovernmental agreement with the city of Charlotte when we hit the winner.
No, second.
Motion, second. Any questions or discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Is there anything else that the board tonight?
What kind of meetings were we having on July 21st?
Yes, exactly.
You want to discuss that?
I'm going to ask the executive session, if there are any executive session. I'm not aware of them. Most of us know that our COVID numbers in Harris County are increasing daily. We went from seven to 15 cases, eight of cases done. I talked to the health department this afternoon. We're at 309 cases and 11 beds. So we are going to, the plan's on our next meeting, you said the 21st?
Yes.
July 21st. We are going to go back to and go back soon, audio only meeting for the town meeting. And the reason for that is the number of cases are rising. I just think that is the right thing that we should do at the time here. And we'll just move from there and do meeting by meeting. But that, those are the plans for July 21st. And information will be posted on the website as far as access numbers and any other information that you can access. I think there's nothing else. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, move.
Okay, there's a motion, and Susan wants the second. All of those in favor? Our turn. Thank you, Mr. Britt.